Thank you very much, Mr. Master of Ceremonies. Let me say a pleasant good afternoon to the members of the head table, our political leader, Honorable Alan Shastly, our Chairperson, our Chairman, and all the members of the Executive. A special good afternoon to you, the members and supporters of United Workers' Party, present in this hall here this afternoon, to our many viewers, and well-wishers, supporters and members who were unable to make it here today, but are at home viewing this live telecast of our full town hall meeting in Anstrerican Rais. A very pleasant good afternoon to everyone. It gives me great pleasure and honour, ladies and gentlemen, to be here this afternoon in Anstrerican Rais, our constituency which was once represented by Senator Dominic Feide. And I consider his representation for the past five years, 2016 to 2021, as the best representation which Anstrerican Rais have ever gotten. Dominic Feide worked extremely hard for the transformation, for the development, for the progress of this constituency. And the marks which he has left in the constituency is visible, from Canaries to Techeme to Vanna to Ridehead in Anstrer, all over this constituency, you can see the works of Dominic Feide and that of the United Workers' Party. There was no parliamentary representative who was more concerned, was more dedicated, who was more committed to his people, to his constituency than Dominic Feide. Every cabinet meeting, political leader, then Prime Minister could tell you, Dominic had to say something about my constituency, my people, PM, I need this, I need that, what the people of Anstrerican Rais, they have been forgotten for too long. And he was agitating, agitating for this constituency on a daily, weekly basis. Dominic Feide, Dominic Feide members was not only the best parliamentary representative for this constituency ever, but this gentleman was probably one of the best ministers of tourism we have ever had in this country. And numbers don't lie, the numbers are there. The accolades are there. From being Chairman of CTO to being voted the Minister of Tourism for the Caribbean in 2018, that was Dominic Feide under the United Workers' Party. So, Anstrerican Rais, you all were gifted with a wonderful, wonderful parliamentary representative. But for some reason or the other, in July of 2021, you, the people of Anstrerican Rais, and by extension, the people of St Lucia, forgot. We forgot, and I'm gonna be coming to the forgets and the forgets as I deliver my presentation this afternoon. As a result of us forgetting, in July 2021, there are many families today, ladies and gentlemen, who are unable to even have lunch this afternoon. There are families who had lunch and who cannot even have supper this evening. We have families, we have people in St Lucia who cannot even pay a bus fare to Castries, who cannot go to the supermarket and buy $20 chicken wings, far less the chicken box. We have the sufferings, we have the agony, we have the cries of people throughout the length and breadth of St Lucia every single day. And why? Because we, the people, forgot. And I say "we", I am not excluding United Workers' Party. Because many of us, many of our supporters, many of you, our members, you did not go to the polls and cast a ballot for United Workers' Party in 2021. Many of you went to the polls and you casted a ballot for the St Lucia Labour Party. For reasons up to today, I cannot believe, I cannot comprehend. But you allowed yourselves to be misled by lies, by propaganda, by malice, by half-truths. And today, the people of St Lucia, the people of Anstrerican Rais are paying for it. My people of Anstrerican Rais, our flambeau family, the red flags of the St Lucia Labour Party were there all the time. But we ignored the red flags and we forgot. And in July 2021, we made a colossal mistake. And we voted in the most incompetent, the most clueless, visionless, the most disastrous man as Prime Minister of this country. And we, the people of St Lucia, are paying the price today. And I am going to point out some of the red flags which we ignored, because I believe it is important that I do so. Because in this country, in this party, we tend to have a short memory. We forget very fast. And we only react on the present. But the past is going to determine your future. And hence the reason why this afternoon, I chose to remind you, our flambeau family, you, the people of St Lucia, whether you are red, yellow, independent of the past, the red flags that we forgot and we made such a disastrous mistake in 2021. You remember? Remember, ladies and gentlemen, between 2011 and 2016, unemployment in St Lucia was over 24% under a Labour Party. Amongst the youth, it was over 41%. We forgot that in 2021 when we went to the polls. When United Workers' Party came in 2016 to 2021, unemployment has gone down by 16.5% by 2019 under United Workers' Party. We forgot that. Youth unemployment by 2019 had gone down to about 41% from over 41%. We forgot that. Three years of negative growth under the St Lucia Labour Party between 2011 and 2016, we forgot that. VAT of 15% in 2013, the same VAT which the then Prime Minister at the time, Dr. Kenny Anthony, said was an oppressive tax on the people. We forgot that and we voted Labour in 2021. When Kenny Anthony said in 2015, I stand corrected, I think it was 2015 or early 2016, he said, "Something happened that had never happened before." We went on the AGSM, the regional security markets to borrow, and we couldn't borrow. We forgot that. We forgot, and in 2021, we made a mistake. When Philip J. Pierre, sorry, when Kenny Anthony made promises of jobs, 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 between 2011 and 2016, and better days, did we get the jobs of jobs and the better days? We forgot that. When Kenny Anthony promised $100 million immediately in the economy, if he wins the elections in 2011, did we get $100 million immediately? But no, but we forgot that. When Philip J. Pierre said, he did not only say to a local journalist in St Lucia, he said it in the UK, that he never understood the impact of tourism on the economy of St Lucia, we still forgot that red flag. A man was Minister of Tourism, he was Minister of Infrastructure, he was Minister of Commerce, 15 years as a cabinet minister, and 15 years as Deputy Prime Minister. It had to take him, Covid, a pandemic, to see, to understand, to know the impact of tourism on this economy. When every child, from kindergarten to primary to secondary, if you ask them, "What is the main source of revenue for this country?", the first thing they tell you, "Tourism." Every little child tells you, "It's tourism." But a man in 2020, 2021 tells you, he never understood the impact of tourism. Who was the Minister of Tourism at one time, we ignored and we forgot that red flag and we made a colossal mistake and voted them in in 2021. We forgot. Another red flag, and I'm taking my time this afternoon to call it out, because like I said earlier, we have short memory and we are paying for it today. When Philip J. Pierre said that Alan Shastly, this Prime Minister back then, was the only Prime Minister in the world who feels, believes and thinks that tourism will come back again after Covid. Look at tourism. We ignored that red flag and we made the mistake in 2021. 2016 to 21, to 2021, ladies and gentlemen, when we were vying for elective office, we made a promise to you, the people of St Lucia. And when I say the people of St Lucia, I mean everybody, flambeau, Labour, independents, everybody. We promise you Five to Stay Alive. You don't forget that. We promise you a reduction in VAT. We kept that promise, we reduced VAT from 15% to 12.5%, we removed 2.5% on VAT. We removed it, but we forgot. We promised a reduction in vehicle licensing fees, the increase which the Labour Party had placed on licensing fees. We reduced it, but we forgot that. We said that we were going to give amnesty on hospital bills as part of Five to Stay Alive. We did it, but we forgot. We said we were going to double the school feeding and transportation subsidies. In 2016, we did that, but we forgot that United Workers' Party did it, delivered on that promise. We said that we were gonna waive property taxes for three years. For three years, we did. And we were able to deliver on Five to Stay Alive within two years of governance in this country. But we, the people, we flambeaus, we forgot all of that. And we are duped by a man who promised us, if he wins government, if he becomes Prime Minister, each and every one of us would get $1,500. Over two years in government, where is the $1,500? A man who promised anybody who is owed up to $5,000 in income tax returns, he would pay it within 90 days. It's over two years, over 700 days, we cannot get that refund from inland revenue. A man who's promised that anybody who was going to earn $4,000 a month, $48,000 a year, you wouldn't pay income tax. Where is that promise? Where is that promise? But we forgot the Five to Stay Alive which United Workers' Party delivered to us in two years between 2016 and 2018. We came into government in 2016, we told you what we inherited, even before coming into government, we told you what the state of the economy was going to be like, was like, and what plans, what vision we had to transform this country, this economy into economic growth to create opportunities for everyone. And by 2019, I remember, if you all could remember, the then political leader, Alan Shastly, said, "It would take us three years to see changes, to see the difference, to see the impact of our policies." We came in 2016, by 2019, this country was already taken off. We had recorded the highest revenue of over a billion dollars. Unemployment was down, economic growth, businesses. You all remember all the businesses which was closed between 2011 and 2016? In the south and all over the island, the construction in the economy. People had lost confidence in this country, in this economy, on the Labour. By 2019, it was different. St Lucia was already kicking off. St Lucia was already the envy of the rest of the Caribbean. And we achieved all of this under the leadership, the stewardship of Alan Michael Shastly and the government of the United Workers' Party. But we forgot all that, ladies and gentlemen. In March 2020, this Prime Minister, former Prime Minister, and the men and women of the United Workers' Party were tested like never before when we had Covid-19, a global pandemic. A global pandemic, the world had never experienced this before in modern history. There was no playbook, there was no manual. When you go and buy a television, you have a manual that tells you, this is the way, it shows you the remote, it tells you which button to put it on, to put it off, to, for settings, for channels and so on. There was no manual as to how to deal with Covid. But this Prime Minister back then, this government of the United Workers' Party managed. And we realized what had happened, the country had to be shut down. The entire hotel sector had to be shut down. $1 billion was wiped out of the GDP. The economy contracted by 24%. Almost 14,000 people were sent home from the tourism sector. We gave the income support through government for persons who were not paying NIC. We had NIC to give payments to persons who were contributing. We got the banks to give the moratorium for six months. We increased the number of persons on the public assistance programme by 1,000 persons. We gave additional monies to persons with disabilities, with HIV and so on. We gave 11,000 people support with electricity bills. We gave thousands and thousands of food baskets all around to help with the impact of Covid-19 in 2020. But we didn't stop there, because we understood the impact, the devastating impact of Covid. And we said, "You have to balance lives with livelihoods." The Labour Party was an opera about lives and livelihoods. We said, "If we do not protect the jobs of the people of St Lucia through major economic interventions and social interventions, the consequences will be even worse than persons who are going to lose their lives." So there had to be a balance. And what did we do to balance it, ladies and gentlemen? We forgot what was done by United Workers' Party and our then Prime Minister. We had a social and economic programme in place. And I have outlined to you what some of the things we did socially and economically. We said, "We are going to undertake infrastructure to put people back to work", even persons who are at the hotels. If those hotels had to do renovations and so on, and the infrastructure taking place, they would get a job there. We had lost revenue, but we said, "We have the..." I remember, we had a DFC programme. We selected three contractors, each contractor, to come up with $50 million. That's $150 million. To pump into the economy, into road construction throughout the length and breadth of St Lucia. We had shovel-ready projects, we had the airport, we had St Jude's, we had some of the projects going on. This was not costing taxpayers a dollar. We had all of those going on just to help, but we forgot all of that in 2021. The same Labour Party, they knew that the monies we got from the World Bank, from the CDB and from the IMF was for budgetary support. If I, if I'm correct, I'm political leader, it was about $300 million EC. It was for budgetary support. It was not to go into projects or pay your debt. It was to pay salaries and some of your payables. The Labour Party knew that. And what did they say, what did they do to play in the heads, in the minds of you, the people of St Lucia, you, our flambeau members and supporters? Give the people their money. That was the cry. Give the people their money, give the people their money. As if the $100 million was supposed to just go into the hands of every St Lucian, when they know we were collecting about $100 million worth of revenue monthly. And because of Covid, because of the shutdown, we were only collecting about $30, $43 million a month. And every civil servant, everybody on the government payroll, they got their salaries and they got it on time under United Workers' Party. Interest on debt, principal on debt was paid on time under United Workers' Party. We never defaulted. But we, the people, forgot all about that. And in 2021, we allowed lies and propaganda to mislead us and make a colossal and disastrous mistake and elect Philip J. Pierre as Prime Minister of this country. We forgot. And you could have seen it in my former constituency of Soufri, ladies and gentlemen. We came with a plan, we came with a vision, because we knew what, where we wanted to take the constituency. We knew Soufri, like Anstrerican Rais, was neglected for decades by the Labour Party. And everything had crumbled down. So the interventions that took place in Soufri, infrastructurally, all the roads we did at New Development, at Esperance Diamond, what we were gonna be doing at Belfort and Boaden, this was to create opportunities, not only employment opportunities for people, but give people an opportunity where they could invest into their properties, into their lands and so on. Open up the constituency for further development, for village tourism and all of that. The works which we were doing at the Soufri Mini Stadium, the stadium they said, which is cancerous, but these days, everything is at the Soufri Mini Stadium. Labour is in power, Labour is in government, the mini stadium no longer gives cancer. All of that was part of building a sporting infrastructure throughout the length and breadth of this country and having the Lotto to undertake the programmes of training, nutrition, sponsorship and so on for our athletes. The Sports Academy in Grozyle was all part of this programme. But we allow Labour to fool us and tell us that this government is paying Lockaby $40 million. Far from the truth. Far from the truth, the gentleman did not even get $1.5 million consultancy. The monies went into the infrastructural aspect of the facilities, the civil works, the purchasing of the materials, the installation of the materials. We allowed them to fool us, we forgot all the good, all the transformative works, and we voted them in. Ladies and gentlemen, today, the cries of frustration, the cries of regret, the cries of "Not me again", the cries of "I was not the one who voted for them", the cries of "They fooled me", all over St Lucia. And all of that is as a result of us forgetting. And that is why I'm saying, the past is what is going to determine your future. You cannot gamble the future ahead with Philip J. Pierre and the Labour Party. We have seen that this is the most incompetent Prime Minister in this we've ever had. We've seen it. And I flagged it, I flagged it in 2019, I believe, in Parliament. When I told the people, I told him, I told St Lucians, "If you look at this man's constituency for 20 years as a parliamentary representative, do you believe he has the capacity, he has the ability, he has the know-how to manage 17 constituencies?" Spider, you said they'll call you prophet, I think I was a prophet long before you. It is, it is showing. It is showing is clear. He cannot manage and we, the people, are suffering. Look at the policies of this government as a result of the colossal mistake we made. St Lucians pay the highest in fuel prices amongst Caribbean nationals. St Lucians pay the highest in cooking gas prices amongst the rest of the Caribbean. Why? United Workers' Party, in the worst of economic times, during the recession, the financial recession of 2008, fuel was $140 a barrel. We never paid $17 a gallon of fuel at the pumps. Never. $14.95 it was. Throughout the Covid crisis, we never paid $17 per gallon of gas or that kind of price of cooking gas in St Lucia. Never. And you have to remember, ladies and gentlemen, that this government, this present Labour government, recorded the highest amount of revenue ever last year, $1.3 billion in revenue. And yet still, yet still, they increased bus fares on you, the people of St Lucia. Yet still, they raised the price of bread. You are raising the price of bread when you have made the most revenue in the history of this economy. And these are the people who pretend to care. But they have put you, the people, worst off. And you are worst off today, because you forgot the red flags of the St Lucia Labour Party. You forgot all the good works of the United Workers' Party. And you made a mistake in July of 2021. And you elect a bunch of jokers to take care of the affairs of this country. And all of us, all of us, our children, our grandchildren, our neighbours, our friends, our families, they are all paying the price. As if all of that was not enough, they have put an additional 2.5% tax on the backs of your people, pretending that it is a levy for health and security. It is a lie. They are misleading you. This 2.5% was never intended to be a levy. It was supposed to be the increase of VAT back to 15%. That's what it was supposed to be. And that is why they have so many issues, so many problems in implementing it. Even the technocrats at the Ministry of Finance, inland revenue are confused. The Prime Minister says something today, the technocrats will say something tomorrow. Confusion. And we, the people, are paying the price for it. When you have inflation at 6.4%, ladies and gentlemen, the highest it has ever been, which government, which Prime Minister, which Minister of Finance in his right head would put additional taxes on the backs of the people? You have a Prime Minister government which is just sucking every penny, every dollar from the pockets of you, the people of St Lucia. And the government is not making any sacrifices. And the government is not making any sacrifices, because you can see the travelling vote have almost doubled. Consultancy have gone up by forty million dollars for the boys and the girls. We see that secret deals with our ports have been made at dates, dinner dates, all over the place. Up to now, we do not know what's in the agreement. We, nobody cares about the patrimony of St Lucia anymore, all groups are quiet. St Lucia has no patrimony anymore because the Labour Party is in power. But you, the Flabo people, you, the people of St Lucia, you can change that in the next three years. The mistake which you all made in June of 2021, you can undo that mistake. You can right that wrong in freest time or even less. You can write, you can write it. This is the time to start to mobilize your base, start to register your new voters. Start to influence, start to spread the word of United Workers Parties' policies and programs around. So that when the time comes, we can do the right thing. We can save this country, they have asked you to protect the victory. That is what they've asked you, with all the disastrous policies, they're still asking you to protect the victory. But today, Flabo family, today, St Lucia, for those of you who are watching, both home and abroad, I am invoking the words of JFK, when he said to the American people, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. And what you can do for your country, St Lucia, what you can do for your country, Flabo family, is to ensure that that mistake of forgetting the past, which you made in 2021, you do not repeat that mistake, when the time comes, when you go to the polls, you re-elect Dominic Fede as your parliamentary representative, Anstrer Canaries. Alan Shastely as Prime Minister of this country. And your humble servant guaranteed will be elected again as the parliamentary representative for Soufret, for Sash. So do not be disheartened, the mistake is, is in the past, we are looking at the future. The future is ours to safeguard. Safeguard that future with Alan Shastely as your next Prime Minister and United Workers Party as your next government. I thank you, good night.
Senator Harold Stanislas, the next parliamentary representative for Soufret.